Of course, we have no idea how many people watch.
Ignition.
Right?
Well, it gets post, aren't right. In theory, we are live for this public hearing now. So take it away, Marty.
Well, as you know, this is a second public hearing we're having on our Webster Community Power. And I think we'll just open it up to, do either of you have any idea what this is about?
So I've read the pamphlet that I think was handed out on Election Day or whatever. There was something available that day. But it frankly left me with more questions than answers. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about it then.
All right. How about you, Craig?
I have not read any documents. I kind of got the whole idea what's going on. But I have some questions about the details.
Okay. So do you want to delve into asking specific questions? Or do you want me to give a kind of overview presentation of what it is?
I'd love to see an overview of it.
Okay.
And I'm sure that's going to generate a ton of questions.
I think I have a couple of questions. We could just get rid of them.
You may have seen an article in the Monitor the other day.
Yes, I did see that, which allows...
Canterbury?
Yeah, right.
We're joining with this coalition, which is what Canterbury and Hockton?
Actually, there are now, there are 28 towns.
Twenty-eight towns.
Towns and cities.
This is...
Nashua.
This is an old slide, but this will give you an idea. There's another eight or nine towns now that have fully been accepted and have joined.
And there are a bunch of other towns that are incinerating.
Yeah, there's about another 20 towns and cities that have said they want to join, but haven't done it yet.
So you contract with them and they sit there and they look at prices. And when they buy power, how long is that contract good for?
So the way that, the short answer is however long is the most profitable and the most beneficial.
I mean typically, what is it? We're talking months, years?
It will vary a lot.
See, the thing is, right now, Unitil and Eversource, they have actually six-month contracts.
Yeah, they're six months at a time.
Because that's what the PUC has set the map. I believe that we will have the opportunity to do other than six-month.
Yes. And so the short version is it does a similar model to what the Co-op does for electricity in that it is a managed portfolio. So instead of every six months going out to bid, they can say, oh, this is a good rate. We want to hang on to this and use it, whether it's a shorter, lower amount of time or not. Or whether they can lock in a good rate for a much longer than six-month period. Whereas the utilities can't do that.
So if I'm hearing you right, there's a portfolio of, we have this contract for this amount of electricity for this amount of time. We have this contract for a different timeframe and a different amount of power. How can that, how do they allocate that?
So the way that it gets set up is, in short, lots of modeling and predictions and protections. And then reserve portions that get purchased if needed. And so it's different kinds of contracts throughout. And I won't try to understand their full contract structure for doing that. But the short version is that as towns and cities come on and off, there's going to be projections based on usage and types and amounts of people. And all of the information from what those people have been using over the past years must be provided by the utilities to the coalition to be able to be used for all of that modeling and projection. And then they go and enter into all of the contracts to make sure that they can procure and provide the power before being able to offer it to people and, as we would call it, launch Webster Community Power.
So this community power, I guess that's my acronym. How big is their staff going to be? I mean, somebody's going to have to be sitting at that computer looking at prices every day.
So there are...
They'll be contracting it out a lot. They'll be dealing with Calpine.
Currently.
Yeah, right. So they're dealing with a company in California. There's also another country in Colorado.
Company, yeah. So there's Calpine Energy and Alpine.
Right.
Why can't they do it themselves?
So they could, and, but the amount of expertise in the software packages and everything make it much more beneficial for being reasonably quick to get things done, to contract out, as well as making sure that all of the expertise and the players that have done this correctly and ensured that it worked elsewhere are part of that process to make sure that it doesn't fall over. Some of the different power coalitions out in California actually had some problems and fell over. Several of them are doing extremely well. And so all of that process and what did and did not work has been taken into account by the coalition, which Marty and I sit on their Board of Directors at this point, as pointed to by the town, to make sure that that's happening.
And how big is that, what it brings?
The Board of Directors right now is everybody who, in other words, there's one director for each town or city. So today, we just added Bosklin. And I think that made number 28.
Either 28 or 29.
Twenty-eight right now.
Twenty-eight, okay.
Yeah.
Has there been any pushback on this whole idea?
The only real pushback has been from the utilities.
Well, it's a little bit from Nashua. Because they're the biggest one in this. And so she is always, she is the, I think she's the city manager. Is that right? Or is she just...
The person I believe you're referring to is in charge of their energy procurement.
Okay.
I guess I would rephrase and ask, what do you mean by pushback? Because there's pushback against the concept, and then there's pushback against, I think I can get a more advantageous thing for my city or town. And it's the latter that Nashua has some.
Yeah, right.
So are they thinking of like going on their own?
They might.
It's possible, and they might.
We could go by our own. We could do it by our own also, though we really, since we don't have...
Wouldn't be practical.
Right.
No, I give that. So if this goes through, customers will get two bills, right? One from Webster Power.
No, no. They'll still get the same bill.
Yeah.
But you've got distribution costs as well as power costs.
Right.
Correct.
Right. So the distribution, the distribution costs will remain the same.
Yeah.
Because you're still dealing with, you know, with Unitil or Eversource, right?
Right, so that comes from Unitil or Eversource.
Right. And that, and the bill will still come.
And they're still managing the infrastructure.
Right, right. But then you get a bill from Webster Power.
It's all on one bill.
You'll have, you'll have three options.
Okay.
So first, if you want, you can just continue dealing with Unitil, right? Whatever, you know, you could just pay them the same you've been paying them. I don't know whether you'd pay them Unitil directly right now, or you're...
This would be the example of how you would see that in your bill. Basically, instead of the supplier being Eversource or Unitil, the supplier portion will say Webster Community Power. You will still get your bill from either Eversource or Unitil.
Right.
Okay.
And if you want, you don't, you don't have to go with Webster. The only reason Webster will be doing this is if it's cheaper. If we're not, if we can't compete with Unitil or Eversource, we're not going to do it. And even if, and even if we are cheaper, if you just felt like you would like to continue to deal with Unitil, then you can just, then you can still continue with just with Unitil. Or you can still deal with, if you remember, there are, I don't remember how, there's other choices. I mean, for example, my bill, I don't deal with Unitil. I mean, obviously, I'm dealing with the deliveries with Unitil. But my power comes from this company called Energy Reward, which is, it's much better, it's much cheaper than Unitil. And I don't know whether Webster Community will be as low as that one. And I might stay with that one rather than going with the Webster Community. So there's three options.
Okay, thanks for explaining.
You know, and if you don't say anything, then you will go to Webster Community.
Did you have any other specific questions? Because most of these are actually in the presentation.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll shut up then, and you can do your...
No, no.
If you've got more specific ones, I'd love to address them.
I just want to understand this.
Right.
Okay. So...
I mean, I'm basically in favor of the whole idea. I just...
Want to know what the idea fully is.
And be prepared to ask questions at both the budget hearing and, you know, at the town meeting. Because really, because we should have a lot of questions.
I hope.
Yeah. Right, well, on the other hand, it might be simply that people will simply say, you know, when they hear that this will be a better deal than you get from Unitil or Eversource, they'll say, fine.
I think...
Marty, I think you've got people that are, I mean, for the first time ever, I went away from Eversource and purchased it through North American Power. I found the cheapest rate that I could.
Right, yes.
When Eversource's latest rate just went nuts in December, I said, I'm done with this. Save 50 bucks a month switching over. I said to Claudia, it's 600 bucks a year. Like, we got to do this. But the reason I had never done it was all the nightmare stories from a decade ago of people locked in. And then if they didn't do something at the end, they got held in, and the rate was three times the amount. So they lost all their savings because it was set up in a way that basically screwed the consumer over in the long run. If you didn't...
If you weren't careful.
Careful.
Right, right.
So unfortunately, that's still possible today. And fortunately, not too many of the third-party suppliers that are in New Hampshire are doing that. But it is certainly possible for that to still happen today. So you do have to do your due diligence on your own if you're doing third parties. But it can certainly pay off. Just make sure it's going to continue to.
One of the things I thought of bringing up at the town hearing is I have just looked at the Unitil bills to the town, right? For just this building and the public, you know? And it just, it went from 35, 35 kilowatt hours, 35 cents per kilowatt hour. This was, this was, it was up until December 31st, right? Now, it is 42 cents per kilowatt hour. And I just can't believe, now, it's actually, it is much cheaper than, not that our residential rate is very cheap, because I believe it's 26.
I'm not sure on the Unitil one anymore.
I think that's what I, because I asked Henry today.
But I know he was bringing up two.
Yeah, and it's 36, I think, for Unitil, and it's a little bit less for Eversource.
Eversource is 22.
Okay. But even so, and of course, that happens to be quite a bit more expensive than what I had. For some reason, and I'm not, I'm not going to ask them, you know, if they, you know, but actually with my Energy Reward, which is, I guess it's a, it's, you know, it's one of those places that deals out of Texas.
Yeah, they're all out of Texas, it seems.
Oh, are they?
Most of them.
Yeah, anyway.
That's where the power is cheap, because it's fully deregulated.
Mine is $15,999, you know? And I thought, wow, that is such a great deal, you know? And it's for, and it's for 100% green, too, you know? So, and I have no idea whether the CNC and H will be able to do. I don't know.
They'll be able to do 100% green the same way that everybody else does it, which is to buy recs to cover things that aren't. But how, how actual green, instead of greenwashed things are, I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, right.
But...
But I think your explanation right there just is, people have some familiarity with going third-party. And it's really, this is just a new third-party.
It is.
Instead of it being, I find a company in Texas on the internet, I'm going with the community. Who's finding a company on the internet in Texas or whatever? So it's like a broker kind of scenario.
Sort of. The short version of community power is using the scale of economics. By everybody banding together and buying in bulk, it tends to be cheaper. And so that's kind of the general overall model and advantage.
But my question is, so why don't the utilities just do that? Eversource is charging these ridiculous rates. It's like, just do that?
They're not allowed.
I think another factor here is they are for-profit companies. And this will be a nonprofit.
Okay.
And I think that there's a difference. I mean, I don't know how much of a profit, you know, Eversource makes, but Eversource is a giant company.
They make millions.
Technically, Eversource, Unitil, et cetera, in New Hampshire are not allowed to make anything on electric supply. They're allowed to make almost as much as they feel like on the delivery and the infrastructure and all of that. But they're not, technically not allowed to make money on energy supply, which is why they don't care. That the rules to make it better, which it did when the rules were enacted, was every six months, you go out and you take the cheapest bid that can handle this. Well, every six months, the only people that are bidding know, well, it's the power companies and it's a huge amount. Let's jack all our rates up. So it's now starting to backfire for the utilities. The PUC may be looking at that along with the legislature at changing some of that stuff in the future. But it would never go down to the portfolio model and the massive advantages of that that CPC and H and the Co-op can do. So the other thing that I would point out is that, you talked about third-party suppliers, and this will be in here, too, but when, when Webster Community Power goes live, what happens is a mailer gets sent out to everybody. And what happens depends on what you're doing currently. If you are on Unitil or Eversource's default power and would be included in the program, and it'll be beneficial in that situation, because we're guaranteeing that either we won't launch or the rate will be better.
Right.
So in that instance, you will get a mailer that says, hey, this is what's going to happen. Your power supply is going to come from Webster Community Power going forward. You have the option to weave it this way if you do nothing, to opt out and retain your Unitil or Eversource default power, or to opt up into these other possible plans, which I'll mention later. The second portion would be if, for example, you already have a third-party agreement. If you already have a third-party agreement, you may get nothing, or your mailer will say, hey, this is here. Do you want to opt in? So it's only automatically happening for the people on default power, that it will guarantee that it will save them money. It would not happen, for example, if you have a third-party, unless you decide you want it to. And maybe you sign up for two months and say, hey, this is okay, but I don't feel like it, and I want to do something else. No penalties ever. You can always opt out at any point in time, starting at the next bill.
I have a question for Marty and Mike. If this Webster Power comes in with a good offer, are you locked into your contract?
So I'm locked in for a year, I believe. I think I'm with them.
As far as I know, I'm not locked, because I've had this Energy Rewards for at least more than 12 months. So I'm pretty sure, I mean, I'm not contacting them right now, because things are going great. Because they are such a good deal.
And it'll be close to a year before we would have anything to actually launch.
Well, right now, I believe we're talking about October, November. If we get everything done right.
That would be soonest possible case. Most likely case for, financial sense, would be launching in the next spring slash summer timeframe.
I know that, I know that...
Because you have to, you have to give...
Yeah, I know that, that obviously, you know, if we're waiting until October, November, that's not a great time, because, you know, it's more expensive.
And you also have to give Unitil and Eversource that six-month window to say, hey, next time, don't procure power for us, because we're going to handle it at that point going forward, so that you're not cutting into that while they already purchased power for their six-month chunk. So that's another part of that PUC rule and regulation.
I thought they were talking about...
It's technically possible for us to get it for the fall. Not really likely.
Okay.
Well, that was my question, sort of. Are there certain windows during the year when you can opt in, opt out? Or, I mean, like, you set this thing up?
For you as a consumer, no.
Right. You can, yeah, you can go in and out anytime you want. That's what I understand.
Yeah.
I mean, like, yeah, I believe, I don't even know that you have to be in for more than a month, right?
Because of, because of the way the portfolio is handled and that it's, it's very dynamic, the, and the majority of people aren't going to be switching all the time. A single person or a group of people in a town moving in and out on a month basis doesn't really change anything for the size and capacity that we're talking about with all of these different municipalities. And I can't really even say municipality, because one of them is a county, not just a town.
It's a Cheshire county.
So it's all Cheshire County. So you as a, once Webster Community Power launches, you as a consumer can go in and out anytime at a billing cycle, which is generally a month. For Webster Community Power to start, that has to align roughly with the six-month windows that Eversource and Unitil use for their purchasing. So that's generally a change of year slash spring or fall.
November, May.
Yeah. So...
I believe there'll be a bunch of, well, there'll be, I don't know, maybe 10 towns or so, which will get this whole thing, launch in probably in April or May.
So there's, there's a group of about 10-ish towns that have already gone through and approved everything. And they're expecting to be launching as soon as possible this spring, within a few months.
Is there any towns voting this down?
Not as of yet. So I'll go ahead and jump through this, and hopefully that will answer some questions and maybe bring up some other questions. So what actually is community power? We've talked about it briefly. Basically, it pools and aggregates the demand to lower costs and expand access to additional types of power and power purchasing agreements. This was all done through RSA 53E, which was at least four or so years ago now. But the latest updates last year and the year before made it actually feasible. And the main change in those updates, which are all in 53E, was that it could become an opt-out instead of only an opt-in, so that you could actually get the capacities of scale. And so basically, it's just saying that cities, towns, counties can provide and come up with the community power model to provide electric power supply on behalf of their residents. And so this is a bit more of that. We've already talked about this, but I'll let you read it briefly. So that basically, we're only looking at the outside two here. And on launch, it would only be the first one. And so that's the pooled purchasing power, to lower costs and give better price stability and to option, for example, when hopefully we get a solar array, that we could actually buy some of that into the coalition instead of just sending it out to anywhere. Those are the kinds of things that are in that pooled purchasing power option. And then on the right-hand side, you will see that the value-added services, some of those things, for example, being able to have more green options, sitting on your bill to opt into automatically if you want to, those sorts of things will come from CPC and H and Webster Community Power fairly quickly. Other things over there, for example, time of use rate options, if you want to opt into, well, hey, I can use my power at the time it's, the grid doesn't need to have problems and peak itself. Then you can get cheaper electricity, but you pay more during the peak times. Those are things that you would be able to opt into that currently we can't, like, on launch are not going to be options. And the same is going to be true for things like, what's a common phrase is demand response or smart grid. And these are basically grid services. Massachusetts, Connecticut, many other places already offer these. But a common example would be you've got backup batteries in your house for, say, solar or just because you want battery backup in case there's a massive storm. The utilities, in the case of doing these, can do things, and Vermont's a really good example of this, where we're going to see a lot of demand today, because there's a ton of extra heat and everyone's going to be turning on their AC between, you know, this hour. They pay you as the owner of that battery to suck out from your battery so they don't have to turn on the super-expensive peaker plants. You make more than your normal rate. It helps pay you back for your battery backup. And it saves everybody money at the same time, because they're not paying the super-absorbing rates for the peaker plants. Those are things that hopefully will be coming, but obviously won't be there on launch. And then the utility continues to deliver the power in the middle. Nothing changes there. That's their for-profit model. That's where they make their money. And they're still going to be making their money there and still maintaining the grid, the infrastructure, the poles, the wires, transformers. That's still their job. So we don't assume any of that.
Hey, can you go back for a second?
Yes.
When you talk, oh, there it is. When you talked about, go to the green battery for a second, so like time of use. Is that on an individual user basis, or is that like a community basis? So I've had experience with time of use, and, you know, people run around like, oh, you can't use the washing machine during the day, because the price of hot water is triple. You got to wait till 6 o'clock at night. Don't turn the dishwasher on, because blah, blah. I don't want to get into that crazy maker mode, so...
At the moment, that would be something that would typically be a, you as an individual consumer deciding that you want to sign up for time of use.
Okay.
Because you think you can save money doing that versus a flat rate.
Got it.
Did you find that, that you, that you could do that?
I will tell you, in Plasberg, New York, that's, so people that lived in off-campus housing, because we didn't care in the dorms, it was free electricity, quote, but people who lived off-campus, my God, it was like, you know, you'd have people that weren't aware of the rules or whatever, and they'd be paying three times the amount during the daytime as they are at night. So it was just, you know, don't take a shower until after 6 o'clock or whatever. It's like, really? That's not how I want to live my life at this age, anyway. Maybe back then, I would have been willing to go along with it. Right now, I just want convenience.
So that's, that's one of those things where it would be a future opt-in.
Okay. And then on, and tell me a little bit more, like, power locally. You mentioned the solar array. But it would allow the town to then expand options that were available for more local generation, right? So I don't know what that would be, but the point is, we could pursue that as a, as a town.
Yes. And there's actually some interesting federal stuff that's coming through right now, too, that will also assist in if we're, as a town, making something that is now going to generate additional electricity. Not only will they cover a portion of the construction, like they've been doing, but they will also, for, I think it's a 10-year period, also pay out per megawatt that it's done and produced, kind of like recs do currently, but it's... but it's not in place of RECs. It's this is a solid amount. So you can actually make additional money and have additional support from the federal government coming out that way too now, uh, as part of some of the latest acts. So those are all things that, um, both Community Power and Webster can look at going forward, uh, once there is a launch and once there is a active base. Um, because it may be, for example, that it is cheaper over the course of five years for CPCNH to, uh, contract with Webster to increase the size of our array or to buy the electricity direct or, you know, whatever that is, to make it more beneficial both to Webster and to all of the CPCNH customers as part of that portfolio. It may be cheaper to do that than go buy it someplace. Um, so those are the kinds of options that come out of this in the future, future, but not the initial.
Thank you.
Um, so going on to that, the, the benefits part of that local control is that it democratizes energy and procurement to a community level. And this is kind of a, an overview for Community Power, not for CPCNH. Uh, and so the reason that I mention that is in, for example, the Nashua instance that was brought up, uh, but any municipality that wants to can enact and do Community Power for their community, regardless of being part of CPCNH or contracting with a third-party vendor, of which there are several coming out of Massachusetts saying, please pay us to do this for you, uh, because we'd love you to continue to pay us. Um, they're basically doing the same thing that CPCNH is doing, but trying to use their scale from other states instead of scale through municipalities. And of course, they're all for-profit businesses. Um, so that's where that difference is. Um, and you can see through here, uh, one of the big things is at the end, and this is a future thing, uh, new technologies for market competition, price sinkables, uh, but more importantly, that resilience and innovation. Things like the batteries that I mentioned, um, as those kinds of technologies come on board, that can enhance it so that, for example, when we have a blackout and a tree is down, uh, you know, right around the corner, that doesn't cut our power because the breakers from utilities automatically flip and maybe it's during the day, so half of the people have solar and a few people have batteries. Now nobody in that circuit of the utility actually loses power. Um, these are not things that can happen overnight, obviously, but those are the kinds of things that build towards this, uh, so that at, everything gets better the longer you're able to do it. And the key thing that I'll point out is right down at the bottom there. Webster Community Power will only launch if it is able to initially offer residential default rates that are lower than or competitive with those offered by Eversource and Unitil. We can kind of scratch out the or competitive part. It's really lower than, uh, because otherwise there's no point in doing it. Um.
I'm curious, how many of the other towns have multiple utilities? We're kind of unique in that sense, aren't we?
Um, about 10.
Really? So it's more common than that? I had never encountered.
I hadn't, I hadn't never heard of it, but I, I talked with a couple of them and they're like, yeah, there's a bunch.
Okay, I'm wondering if Bosquen has a.
I think they're all Unitil.
Yeah.
Sorry, I think they're all Eversource.
Phone companies and if I was to call from my house to somebody down, down the road here, you'd toll-call.
Toll-call.
That's quite a few years ago.
And, and Bosquen's not all, because there's seven houses on Cornhill Road. They get their power from Eversource on our side.
Uh, and so.
Other than those seven Bosqueners that you're after, Bosqueanians.
So the, uh, we meant, we showed this briefly before, but this is the way that the electric bill is. And you'll have to pardon the, these are not my bills, but are old bills that were used as examples. Um, so we wish we still had some of these rates.
Right.
Um, but you'll notice that supply and delivery are different, uh, just as they've always been. This is the way it is now from, uh, Eversource. And so as we go forward, you can see, yes, the cost of the electricity and the cost to get that and maintain the poles and so on is on the right side. So the supply portion is what we would be looking at as Webster Community Power and the Coalition, uh, for taking care of. So the key points, Eversource and.
One other point here.
Yep.
There's a lot of work. I mean, putting, putting this together is, is costly, right? I mean, you need a Eversource as a computer program, a database with all this stuff and they generate this stuff, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, how does, how does Webster Power get their, their, uh, their information to E- E- to Eversource so that they can put that on here? In other words, this is, you look at that and say, oh, yeah, yeah. It's a complicated process to actually get that thing.
So it's all done the same way that, um, other third-party suppliers do?
What's the difference between, you know, my using, um, energy reward to using Unitil?
But he's, he's asking for Webster.
Who's gonna, for every resident at Webster, right, they have different usage.
Yep.
That information, where is that stored and how does it get to Eversource so they can put that?
So that happens the exact same way that it does today with third-party power. It comes from your meter, read by Unitil or Eversource. If you're enrolled with a third-party power source or C- or Webster Community Power, they send that data to them. They say, this was our agreed-upon rate. Send that information back to Unitil or Eversource and then you get the bill. Eversource or Unitil gets the funds from you, sends off the portion as appropriate to the third-party or in this case to Webster Community Power. And that is mainly going to be managed by, uh, Calpine and Ascend Analytics. If we're assuming we are going with CPCNH or the Coalition for the power procurement and management and so on. So we as Webster don't have to have that expertise to do it. It's, but it is all handled in the most up-to-date and professional manners.
And, and I suspect everything up to the meter is on the delivery side. They own the meters still.
Correct.
So they're just reading that. They don't come to the house anymore. I think they drive down the street and it feeds into their computer and off they go, right?
They're.
That all continues. And then as you said, the bill, the backend of it is, oh, Mike's goes here. Dave's goes there, you know, Craig's goes there. That, that's for them, so, right?
Mm-hmm. And of course, that brings down to the end, which is why it's all completely voluntary.
Mm-hmm.
Because if one person does or doesn't participate, it doesn't change anything other than Unitil or Eversource says, well, I'm not going to send that information over and ask for a price. I'm just going to charge them. Uh, so it really doesn't change anything that the utilities are doing, other than they do more of it.
Can I just make sure I understand this? Webster Electric Aggregation Committee, that's for you?
Uh, so.
Or is this the Energy Committee? I'm just a little confused on this.
So the, the, uh, Aggregation Committee is the technical term from the PUC.
Yep.
And the Select Board appointed the Energy Committee to be the Aggregation Committee.
Got it.
So it is the total of the, uh, Energy Committee, of which a quorum is here, but not all of us.
Okay.
So. That brings us into the actual aggregation plan. You saw some of that document that we were editing uh, ahead of time. And the previous version of that document is on the website. The newer version of the document will be on the website, uh, following the meeting. Um, the.
It's really nice and simple to read.
Yeah, I, I.
If you happen to have, if you're trying to fall asleep, it would be nice and easy. Miss Barney's nose is growing it right.
Only, only a lawyer would say that that was nice.
It's certainly calm reading. I, I wouldn't necessarily call it riveting reading. Um, so this is kind of the overview of what is it. Um, and we mentioned that we designated the Energy Committee as the Aggregation Committee. Uh, the Select Board tasked them with doing this, uh, which again is all following the PUC rules and regulations for doing Community Power. Uh, and we have to hold as a town, two different public hearings, uh, in order to go through this process. We're actually on our third right now and we will have a fourth with the budget hearing.
Yep.
Um, which may or may not be listed as a public hearing. We're really just counting the first one and this one. Uh, the reason I say third is because we had a second one that was scheduled a little while ago and nobody showed up, so we canceled it.
We did.
The two of them showed up.
Um, so, uh, those are the two dates. It was from November of last year and then today's date. Uh, and then we're going to, as the Select Board, also include that on the warrant, uh, assuming that the Aggregation Committee, uh, after the public comment decides to go forward with it.
Do you have, will, will you be showing us what the, what's the question on the warrant? People are going to vote yes or no. If it comes up later, then I'm okay.
I don't have it in, I don't have it in this presentation. Um, it's actually, uh, most of it is coming from what Warner is doing, um, for their, uh, notice and, and such. But it's two, maybe three sentences. It's not long.
Okay. And, and it's obviously a yes vote is we want to do this and no vote is.
Yes. Uh, it, later on, I can, I can try to find and pull up that to, to show you the.
So selfishly, I think we keep that as simple as possible so that.
Yes.
People know what they're voting on and.
That is definitely the plan.
Yeah.
So this goes through and basically says what we did, uh, or what we have to do uh, through the Aggregation Plan. Uh, most key is that everything through here, because it is a nonprofit entity formed by, managed by, and under the rules of municipalities, everything that is required of, uh, right-to-know transparency laws, uh, doing meetings in public and, and quorums, uh, and, uh, things like data privacy and protection and so on. All of those things that apply to municipalities are also used and apply to the Coalition and to Webster Community Power, et cetera. So in the plan, we are required to consider how net metering works, uh, which is in there and basically nothing changes. Uh, and how customers enroll, which is mainly the, uh, opt-in, opt-out. And so this would be an opt-out for those under default power, opt-in if you have your own third-party. And part of the key here, and it's, it's a little hard to separate, um, is that this does not commit the town to any defined course of action, nor any financial commitment. And the reason I say that it's a little bit hard to differentiate, and you'll see this a little bit more in some of the other stuff, is that we are going to keep talking about, for example, the Coalition or the way that we intend to do this. And, but the reason that the plan itself, as the Electric Aggregation Plan, does not actually commit the town to anything, is that it basically sets up that Community Power can happen for the town and how it happens. It doesn't say that the Coalition must be used to do that. And so as I alluded to earlier, there are, uh, outside, I'm going to jump out of here because they just sent some random email earlier. Uh, so for example, Freedom Energy Logistics is one of the companies that is going around, uh, and has done this a lot in, for example, Massachusetts and is trying to get interest in towns to use them instead of the Coalition. Um, and so technically, we could go use them. Uh, the value proposition has tended to be better with, and it's definitely the transparency level has been better with the Coalition. And so that's why this has come about the way it does. Uh, in the overall document, which we're not going to be showing here, uh, unless there are specific questions for sections, uh, this is the breakdown of that. But in short, what is it? And how does it work? Uh, and then later on, what is the Coalition? Um, but in short, the process we've gone through and it's a long document, uh, but it is available on the website in previous draft form and the latest changes that we just approved earlier tonight, uh, will be up there as well. So what will it do? We've talked about most of this and, and I'll say that a bunch because I haven't re-edited this slide deck after it was originally set up and things have changed a couple of times to make it repetitive. Um, but basically it will be, it will operate on a competitive basis and the, and it's opt-out, uh, for the start. But that number four is one that's really key, uh, and that's, it will be self-funded. And so there are no taxes that go to this. If you do not opt-in, if you are not using it, you pay nothing for it. It doesn't affect you in any way, shape or form. Uh, and so it's all done by the rates as, as, uh, shown. And there's a little bit of a breakdown for that later in this to, to give more context. Um, and so that's the way that it's set up. Uh, the ultimate oversight for anything financial in a town is always the Select Board. So the Select Board with advisory support from the Aggregation Committee has to contract for the necessary services. Uh, the anticipation is that we would contract with the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, uh, because that is, they've been helping us, uh, go through this process. Um, and they've, a lot of the people that have done the, uh, rules and regulations and lawmaking for it are also part of the organization, uh, so know it as thoroughly as possible for the highest level of expertise. Um, we've already covered the enrollment process earlier, so I won't go through that. Um, but that's the, what we mentioned with the mailers. Uh, this is the, an example, and this is one of the charts that we updated. But, um, in short, you will most likely have a basic service that is, hey, we're going to reduce your rate by, you know, a few cents per kilowatt hour compared to the, uh, utility. And it will probably be a more green than the utility at the same time. There, depending on whether it's actually cheaper or not, uh, there may be a opt-down version that could be even cheaper than that. Um, but, uh, the way things are looking currently, um, in the, in the markets, that may not exist because it's actually cheaper to use more renewable, uh, instead of less, until you get to the, I need to have lots of renewable. And then of course, there's the opt-up towards more renewable sources. So that's an example of what we are expecting slash hoping will be there upon launch, but we won't have the full details of what's actually available until closer to launch. And so this is the kind of concept of the way that, uh, renewable portfolios have happened. And this is a statewide thing that the utilities have to follow. And it's, uh, a little bit hard to see on the right-hand side, but it's basically where did all of these things come from? What kind of renewable? Uh, and then this is projected going forward. You see, in basically all of the blues are required in what the utilities will have to do. And the greens on top are how much more renewable we're expect, we're expecting the whole Coalition banded together can actually make our power, uh, in the process. And so we're expecting that by 2025, we'll be up around the 35% mark fairly easily for the sum total of those in the state. Um, a bit about the Coalition, uh, one of the key things is that bottom right square. And that is that they are designed to insulate the municipalities and the taxpayers from financial and legal liabilities, because they will handle and be accountable for the services, the procurement, the management of the portfolio, making sure. making sure there is power, et cetera, et cetera. And so they have the risk management committees and the firms and, and so on that have been contracted to do that, with options to bring those in-house as more expertise and employment happens in the coalition.
By the way, I'd point out that, that everybody involved in the coalition is a volunteer. It's, and I mean, I don't spend, I don't even spend a fraction of the time that most of these people are spending. It's just amazing. I was there, you know, for the usual three hours from the meeting, and, you know, but there are people there who are, I would imagine that they've gotta be spending probably like 30 hours, you know, each, each month, you know? And it's all volunteer.
Or more.
Yeah, oh, right, right, yeah.
Recently, the, the risk management committee, for example, has
Oh, yeah.
Been meeting at least once a week for several hours, and...
Now, you know, some of them, you know, like the, the chair of the coalition.
Which is Cliff Beal up there.
Cliff, you know, now, you know, since he happens to be the, you know, the manager of the city, imagining that, that the city is paying for him.
Yeah, he's the assistant mayor up there.
Yeah, right. But, but there's a lot of other people there, you know, who are like me, you know? We don't have, we're not working anymore, and so they're spending an amazing amount of time.
But it looks like the officers, by and large, are like Cliff. They're, they're currently employed somewhere. And this is one of the RASK assignments to provide a better service for residents.
Let's see.
Actually, none of them, this wicked small, but I do see like energy committees, so maybe that's a volunteer.
Yeah, so the, the only ones, let's see.
City of Dover.
The, April, who was the previous chair on the bottom right. Cliff, who's the current chair. I believe Chris Parker, and then Doria Brown.
Doria's, is from Nashua.
Who is no, actually no longer the secretary. But tho, and she's from Nashua. Those are the four positions that you see in the officers there that are paid by their municipalities to, to be part of this. One of the things I would point out is, the chair, current chair, Cliff, has a ton of legislative experience, has been on the legislature, but more importantly, was also one of the PUC folks for quite some time. And so, is really adept at managing all the intricacies and the ins and outs and regulations, and making sure that everything will actually stand up the way that it's supposed to. And again, this is only 20, there's now like 28-ish towns.
Do you know if Litchfield is looking at this? Have you heard Litchfield mention?
I have not.
I'm just surprised, you know, they do so much with Nashua typically following along, but I didn't see him on that list.
And, so, so the, yeah, they are currently in it. That doesn't mean they're not talking about it.
Why, you know, the other, the, the other eight?
Yeah, I don't have the other eight listed here, but with the 20 members, it was approximately 960,000 megawatt hours per year. And to put that in context, the solar array that we were looking at installing was, is a 75-megawatt array. I shouldn't say that we were contemplating, but that was contemplating being installed as Dear Meadows Solar.
What about Hopkinton? Is that a member?
No.
Hopkinton is not a member. At least not yet.
No, I mean, right now, looking at those, there's a nice map in, in Henry's office, you know, and he, he has the three towns, Bosque and Webster and Warner. They're all, has them all colored in as red, you know? But there's actually nothing else in, in Merrimack County.
And who's Henry?
Henry is the, one of the two contracted kind of employees that helped set up CPCNH.
Yes, Canterbury, yes, Canterbury is, yes.
I apologize for jumping out. I wanted to see.
But he wasn't one of the officers. He's, he's the employee that...
No, Canterbury was, Canterbury.
Well, the energy consultant we use is a guy by the name of Dick Henry, so that's why I didn't know.
Yeah, right, they were about, about the same.
Yeah, this is Henry.
I think they'll be dealing with the town meetings.
I wanted to see if we had an updated, oh, here we go. Let me see if I can open.
So what about Concord? Are they gonna do anything?
No, neither is Manchester. In fact, as far as I know, the only, the biggest is Nashua and Hanover.
I believe this is current, except for it has now added Bosque.
Bosque's number 28?
Yes, Bosque was added today.
Yes, right, today.
And where's Webster? Where's 16?
Yes.
Sure.
Is that right, 16?
And so you can see by both the, the number and the locations of stars, that it's, it's all across the state.
Yeah.
And so it's...
Yeah, I was kinda impressed with Sugar Hill.
That's interesting. Well, Sugar Hill and Shelburne are both.
Oh, Sugar Hill was very enlightened population.
Right.
Is it?
That's one way, one way of putting it.
They sort of led the charge on Northern Pass, among others. Especially north of the notch.
Right.
So going beyond the members, you had both kind of alluded to what about employees and, and/or portions of payments. And so, the illustrative example of about half-delivery and half-supply, that's obviously changed a bit now, but it's not too far off. If you look over on the right-hand side, this is taking into account approximately a, at the time, 10 cents per kilowatt hour rate. That would be nice. One of the keys, pieces here, though, is to notice the difference between the green, gray, and blue bars. The blue is the amount that's actually being used for energy and energy procurement. And then the gray and green are your kind of overhead, but not really. So the gray is your, how do we run this? And in this, you'll see it's less than one cent per kilowatt hour that people get charged in order to be able to run all of this through the various contracts. And to, I don't want to give false numbers, but to put it in context, we're talking about maybe a million-dollar contract for several years for a particular company that would, that would be part of this, versus approximately 150 to 200 million in energy procurement per year.
You're talking about the money that's going to CalPine?
Through, yeah, through CPCNH, and goes to CalPine and Ascend and so on. The portion that's interesting is that green, which is the reserve fund. And this is something that technically wouldn't have had to exist, but it is the smart way to do it. And that reserve fund basically starts off by growing in small iterative amounts, until there's enough of a reserve built up that they no longer need to hold outside credit and/or debts, and...
That's because you have a certain, they know that there'll be a certain amount of, of people who just won't pay their bill.
Or will go on and off service, or think rates will spike at different times, or in that sort of thing. And the reserves allow you to smooth that out and make sure that the customer doesn't have to deal with it, like they do in Texas. So, we're making sure, it's all being done in a way to make sure that that stays upfront, and maintains everything it needs to be reliable. The, but the reason I say it's kind of interesting is that that green part goes there, and once you hit that amount that you need in order to be good and, and reliant and resilient, you could stop. But the general plan is that most, most municipalities and the coalition as a whole generally won't stop that reserve buildup. What will happen is, once it gets beyond that point, it will then become, we can go build a solar array, or go do this other thing, or help put batteries into different locations to make ourselves even more resilient and more inexpensive over time. And so, that reserve fund builds up, and then that's also, the future built beyond that is what they would use for projects. It would not be, oh, we're deciding we're gonna put this in, so we're gonna jack the rates up, like say EverSource or Ementil would do. So, we, we covered this already as well, but by joining the coalition, the town of Webster has access to all of their resources and expertise. And there is a director and alternate. Marty is the director, and I'm the alternate director that sit on their board of directors. And then, the plan gets done through the select board and approved by the town. This is the general, this is a little bit out of order, because we are not one of the initial starting towns. But basically, we form the committees, draft up the, the plan, which we're talking about, that goes through, gets approved by the PUC as well, and then by the residents. And at that point, then, quote, CPCNH is formed. That part already had happened, so we did a lot of that and joined them, instead of formed them. And then all of that is community-appointed with committees and getting all of the appropriate experts and so on.
And Dave, there's no fee to join them, right?
Correct.
You just say, we want in. Or, I mean, you have to go through this process, obviously.
Yes. As a municipality, we pay nothing, until such point as we tell them, we have chosen you to give us power. At that point, then, we're guaranteeing basically that they can take the amount out of the rate payers that they have opted in or did not opt out. And it will be as personal to the, the previous slide, where it's those overhead bits. And the total of it all will still be less than the default power, or we won't launch at all. And then you can see through here, it's all going through ISO New England, which is our larger power grid area. And that's where the power markets happen, for all of the power brokering, and there are all kinds of degrees that you can get to do some of that work, and I'm glad I don't have to.
Driving south on 89 this morning, they had fired up the Bowe Coal Plant. You know, 'cause all of a sudden, like, look at that, ooh. And they must be gearing up for the cold weather stamp, 'cause I can't imagine why else they fired it up. Normally, it's that, you know, you just drive by and it's not running now, but it was cranking this morning, and it was this smog. It was just unbelievable. You could just see the brown in the air, and a little bit of coal popped. Had it just started, like, it wasn't efficient yet. It's like starting your car, starting your diesel, anyway.
Oh, don't worry, it's clean coal.
Oh, yeah.
So, the timeline for community power and how this goes. There's all the initial research, and so, we were appointed in 2021, after the energy committee started talking about this and doing their research in 2019, including having one of our local representatives from Warner come over, who worked on all of this, and that was Clyde Carson. So he worked on enacting all of the original plans to allow this to happen.
And Warner's one of the original?
No.
No.
Warner joined after us, actually.
Really?
Yeah.
But Clyde, when he was in the legislature, was involved in?
Yes.
That's interesting, okay.
But I think they're on exactly the same schedule we are.
They're on the same schedule we are.
They're in wave two. Because it's wave one, the ones that are gonna, hopefully, they'll be long-term.
That have already passed their town meetings or city councils. So we've done all kinds of conferences, webinars, and so on, to go through and follow the policies as they change through the legislature in the process, and then the PUC rulemaking, and then the coalition of New Hampshire that we joined and continued to work with like-minded folks for that. Then the select board authorized the Electric Aggregation Committee and Webster to join CPCNH. And then at that point, the committee, as we are seeing now, has to hold the two public hearings, of which this is the second. The select board will vote on the plan, and this is a little bit different than what's required, because we're adding an extra step for more transparency and hopefully more publicity, in that typically, it's only the two public hearings, and then the select board approves it and says, okay, it's on the warrant article. And hopefully, it happens. We are saying that we're also going to have it on the select board budget hearing, and then, of course, it will be on the warrant article as well, if approved by everybody. And then, if approved by the town at meeting, then we notify all of the people, start the contracts, keep everybody informed about when we can or may offer power, et cetera. And then we can hold another public hearing to say, hey, we're about to launch, and this is the more detailed plan. What do people think? Do you wanna change various parts of, of this, or make other plans available, et cetera? And then, launch the program with the mailouts. So that is the section and the overview of it. And of course, answering a bunch of questions in the middle. And have we sparked any more questions? I'm good.
No, and I, I appreciate the format, because you kept it interactive throughout, so I think I was able to get my questions answered. You know, my, my only feedback is to simplify the PowerPoint presentation, really, you know?
This was for these public hearings. This is not what we would be envisioning to show up at a town meeting.
Yeah, I think we gotta keep that really, just basic facts of it. And, you know, fewer words or pictures, or however we get there, but I think you gotta really simplify this for people.
Yeah, I agree. The main points.
He has a, an interest.
I mean, wanna be home before dinner.
Well, we probably don't have anybody to serve lunch or goodies or anything. They don't mount a bunch. Cookies and brownies and stuff.
Right.
No food.
So, do you think we're gonna do, how much do you think we're gonna do for the, the budget?
What do you mean?
The budget hearing. How much, how much do you think we're gonna, are we gonna basically do the same thing? Did you just get here?
So the warrant?
Uh, no.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for coming.
Good seeing you.
Do you think we're just gonna?
Run away.
So the, uh, let me go try to find that warrant article bit. One moment. So the working draft language for the warrant article is to see if the town will vote to adopt the Webster Community Power Plan, to authorize the select board to implement the plan, and to take all action in furtherance pursuant to RSA 53E. The Webster Community Power Plan is an opt-out program that offers more flexible electricity procurement. The plan will initially provide lower electric rates for residents, or it will not launch. Initial participation in the plan can be declined, after which enrollment becomes voluntary.
So that's, you just wanna put that before the, at the budget hearing?
So that's the warrant article. I'm sure that people will have questions, because I certainly hope more than only the four people that have shown up to our public hearings show up. So I, I would, I, I'm going to be prepared with a screen to be able to bring up some of the slides. I don't plan to give a presentation presentation, but I wanna make sure that when people ask questions, we can answer them appropriately and show them.
Yeah, okay.
So...
Because we're, you're expecting we're gonna have...
I would assume the normal budget group, which is normal... I would assume the normal budget group, which is normally thirty to fifty. It hasn't been with pandemic, but.
Yeah.
It's less than that. We've been getting about ten people in the room.
I mean, with with pandemic stuff, we had less than five for one of them.
Yeah.
But.
Maybe people are feeling more confident now, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, because if you go back, I mean, before the pandemic, right, it was, you know, the usual fifty or sixty people.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Though I will say, we've also done a fairly decent job as the Select Board of trying to keep anything in there not controversial over the past several years. There will be some things that I'm sure people will question on the warrant articles this year, but none of it should actually be controversial, so we'll see. But anything else on community power?
No, again, I I I think, thank you for that presentation. I felt good walking in and knowing everybody in the room. It's not like, you know, there's somebody from Texas sitting here trying to convince me this is the way to go, right? So I trust you to be making the hard decisions. And I, so I would encourage you to emphasize that point, like, I don't know who else is on the Energy Committee, but their names, like, it should say the people driving this to your neighbors, and here they are. And I should see Marty's name, Jerry's name, George's name, because people are gonna sit there and say, oh, okay, this isn't like, I asked, who's Henry? I don't know who Henry is. You know, I don't care who Henry is, I care who you are, and so I I encourage you to really emphasize that, that it's a community-based decision. And I don't, again, I don't know who else is on the committee, but seeing the names, I think, would help.
D? I think you know of D.
Yeah, certainly.
It'd be D and you would have seen the note from Tricia.
Tricia's gone.
And. Ron.
Ron and I think, shouldn't we just take him off the committee since he hasn't, he hasn't been?
I don't know if there's a process for that or not.
Which Ron?
Uh, Leland.
See, I don't know, but that's okay.
Yeah, I mean, he was, he was, he might still be employed by Revision.
I believe so.
Yeah. I I, I don't know. He's a nice guy. I I I knew him.
And knowledgeable about solar stuff.
Right, yes, yeah. He was definitely a guy to be on the committee.
He he came in when we were trying to figure out what was going, like I did, to figure out what was going on with the municipal array, so. Sorry, I'm quickly writing some minutes at the same time.
So can I, is the hearing over? Did you close?
Yeah.
Yeah. We're still filming?
It is still filming, yes.
So.
Meeting is still open, yes.
So let me ask a separate question. So we we've been doing a ton of energy work. So in Litchfield, the schools are sort of leading the way on this. Not the town, like, I've encouraged the town, you should get an Energy Committee going. You should be looking at what you can do with the fire station and the municipal building and so forth. But we've, we've been doing some incredibly innovative stuff on the school side of it. And one of the things that's interesting is with this project, we've ended up with excess lighting fixtures, LED lighting fixtures. And I need to figure out what to do with them other than link them in a comics box, so I don't know what your budget is or if you've talked about trying to do, you know, these are not very efficient, obviously, so have you had comics?
These are, these are, these, all of these, I don't, they're probably not, they're not the most efficient, right? I mean, these are not LEDs.
Right.
I don't remember how many years ago it was. We took, we changed every one of the the fluorescents in pretty much, in all in this building and all in the the public building. Because they all changed from being the.
T twelve to T eights.
T eights, right, yeah. And at the time, that was, that was definitely, you know, and it was a good deal because Unitil paid half.
Correct, yeah, the rebates and all that, that stuff.
Right, yeah. And I seem to remember that at some point we did ask and I I seem to remember, we had, actually, we had some, somebody who was also paid for, I think by Unitil, who said, it really wouldn't pay to to change everything to to LEDs. I mean, it's just the cost of it, it wouldn't be justified. Though I believe that we changed the the stuff in the fire department.
So I can't speak to these lights because I don't remember too much about that. Because I know that, especially the fluorescent changes before I was here.
Yeah.
But the the Public Safety Building, the main things that were changed were the outside always-on lighting and the high bay lights that were in the engine bays.
Yeah.
Because those changing over to LEDs, A, were brighter and instant on, and B, did not have the startup surges that the existing ones did. And so that helped with demand charges as well as overall use. So that was a big win up there that that we helped make sure happened, but.
That must have been like five years ago, right?
Maybe two.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't during the.
It must have, well.
I would have.
It must have been maybe three, because this is my third year in Select Board, and I was on the Select Board.
Oh, okay.
So.
You got elected in March of twenty twenty?
I I will, I will be on this ballot.
So you got elected in March of twenty twenty?
Yes.
So right as the world shut down?
Yes.
Welcome.
Right as the world shut down and every single one of our staff left.
Yeah.
So I get to work on figuring all of that out.
Well, let me, so again, I'm trying to figure out what to do with these fixtures and I sent an email to the guy who did a lighting conversion at our high school, and I'm like, can you use these in a project somewhere? We're just trying to offload it at this point, and so.
What kind of lighting are they?
They're LED lighting. They're they're basically.
Are they replacements?
Yeah, you take that, you take that down and you pop this thing in.
Okay.
You just reconnect the wires and it's good to go. The only thing I don't know is all the controller stuff behind it, you know, so I don't know exactly.
Throw away the ballast with the project.
Say again, Jerry?
You throw away the ballast.
Yeah.
Is it a, is it a replacement fixture or a replacement light tube?
It, you you literally lift that out of, out of the ceiling, disconnect it, take that out and get rid of it.
Take out the fixture, so the whole fixture?
The whole fixture, okay, so then, and what it has is down the center is the LED.
Yeah.
With a sort of ambient effect like this over, so it's really one light strip down the center, but the whole thing kind of lights up. Because it, like, uplights and then reflects downward, if you will, so very the light quality is incredibly different. The flicker from these things drives me nuts. I never use the LEDs, or I never use the fluorescents in my office because it drives me nutty.
So.
The LEDs do not do that, so.
So, how many of these, first of all, we can get them for nothing?
Well, we'd have to, no, I I don't know about zero, but certainly at cost, it's just like, get them out of here, and then if you just have the electrician installed, there's more devil to the details, Tony Martin, so.
I mean, because obviously, we've got to pay the electrician to re.
Correct, correct.
So I guess we have to figure out whether, what the cost is and how much we're gonna save.
Right.
If it's an entire fixture, the versus take these apart and remove ballasts and rewire the fixture and then put stuff in, it's actually not too bad for an electrician. Because it would be pretty quick to pop the whole unit out and just replace it on standard one-twenty.
I was talking about, another alternative is just to keep the fixture, but replace the fluorescent tubes with LED tubes. In that case, you have to do away with the ballast.
Right, the the tubes are cheaper and are replaceable, but you pay more in labor because it's a lot longer process for the electrician.
Watching, watching the crew do this, because they did the entire high school in a couple of weeks and you know, you're talking multiple fixtures per classroom and it, because it was just, take it down, put the new one in, connect. They they just crank through.
It's quick.
It really, the labor is not that great. You know, and that comes back to, again, somebody with basic electric knowledge. I mean, I don't know what the town's liability would be, you know, if you would want a certified electrician doing that or what have you, but it's.
I remember, I remember doing this. You know, I was volunteering, you know, in the, in the temple in in Concord, you know, we just had a bunch of people. And we just took out the old fixture and put in the new one.
Yeah.
We didn't have an electrician doing it.
Are you talking LEDs for all these?
Yeah, I I would put it this way. I would be comfortable with doing the work. I would not be comfortable with the fact that liability is really weird for both me as a person and for the town if it's not a licensed electrician. And so it would be a licensed electrician.
There you go. So let me, let me do, I gotta do a little more due diligence on my side of it, but it's one of those.
Yeah, find out, find out what what we would have to pay.
North Branch Construction basically said, hey, there's five pallets of fixtures here. What are we doing? And I said, give me the model numbers. And I sent them off to a guy who hasn't gotten back to me. I need to send those off to him, because I said, if you can use these in another project, we have them. They're high-quality fixtures, and we, it's not inexpensive. You know, budget stuff that was bought, it's it's Phillips good, good fixtures, so we just need to figure out what to do with them.
And even if it weren't, for example, up here, that might be relevant for the offices because they're always on. Whereas these are rarely on.
Right, yeah. And you probably also wanted your public safety.
They don't have a whole lot of this style of fixture, except in the training room and offices, and they're not really in there that much.
All the time.
I mean, the police office, maybe, yeah, the police office, but there's, I want to say maybe four or five lights in there in each office. So.
And then if nobody's on duty, there's nothing.
I think they leave one on, but.
Right, yeah.
Well, let me.
Anyway, yeah, find out.
See what's there, because at this point, they're just gonna become a nuisance, like, we're sitting on these and it doesn't make any sense. They should be deployed to some project somewhere, so.
Well, I I can speak for not my board, but on my own behalf as part of the board. The town would love a donation.
Yes, but you're putting me in a pickle because.
Oh, of course.
That's a, you know, I I mean, it's gotta be, we we bought them, we own them.
Right.
And so we've got to, we're gonna find a way to make sure that we come out of that, so. Anyway, it was, I won't get into the whole story of how we got five extra pallets, but that's another story for another day.
Yeah, I mean, if if it makes sense for us to do it, then the Energy Committee can look at that and say, yeah, it does or doesn't, or here's other good priced alternatives, whatever, and and the Select Board can look at it later.
All right, excellent. Thanks again, guys. Appreciate it. Nice job with it.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me know how much it'll cost for each one of these, because I'm thinking also of the Indian Museum. Now, you know, and that would be, obviously, it's a nonprofit, you know, and so if you've got a lot of them, you know, I'd also figure out there whether it makes sense. Because again, you know, they have fluorescents, probably like this, probably the T eights, you know, but we're talking about making some big, big changes at the Indian Museum. We're talking about, you know, getting solar panels and, you know.
Very nice.
And getting a a heat, a heat pump, you know, for the heat, you know, hot water pump, not the hot water, you know, but yeah, but of course, we're talking about a big, big project, which, of course, you have to fundraise for that.
Did you want to continue anything else with the Energy Committee, or did you want to close the meeting?
No, let's close the meeting.
Have we, have we closed the hearing?
The hearing was was closed earlier. The thing that I would suggest before we completely close is to either accept and recommend the plan or not to the Select Board.
I'd make, I'd move that we accept and recommend the plan to the Select Board.
I'll second that. Take a vote?
Aye, I'm here.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. So let's present it to the Select Board. And that is next Monday?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
A move that we say goodnight?
I second that.
I think that's unanimous.
All right.
Close enough.
Page thirty-four, I will go ahead and be recording.
All right, have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.